All right, we'll call this work session to order.
Your microphones there, please. And call the order if Mr. Laner would you call roll, please?
Sure. Mayor Pilon.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Alders, we just talked about. Uh, councilmember Ryan.
Here.
And councilmember Flattaboe. I think we know what's going on there, too, so. Uh, deputy clerk Johnson.
Here.
And your city administrator Scott Laner is present. Roll call is taken, sir.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brian.
As long as we're having a work session, I would like to add before we talk about the open administrator position, um, the vacancy on council.
All right, have that as the first item. We get a motion from councilmember Brian, second by councilmember Rainville. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll approve the agenda as amended. Those in favor.
Second to motion.
Uh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mayor, second by councilmember Brian. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Um, the council was given a, um, email from councilmember Flattaboe, um, submitting her resignation, and, um, I would, uh, like to, uh, make a motion to accept that resignation. And then, since we had, um...
Let's do them one at a time.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to accept councilmember Flattaboe's resignation effective last Friday, I think it said.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right.
Mr. Mayor, did you want us to do something, uh, staff-wise, to put that in paper and in a resolution? Do you want us to do any? We didn't come prepared tonight to...
Yeah, I think, I think...
I didn't know that, so how would you like us to handle it?
I think that'll, that'll, to follow up with, um, I, did you guys get copied on her resignation?
Just from a council member. We didn't get anything from her.
Okay. So, I think we need to, uh, include their resignation and then the motion tonight to accept that. So, we'll record that in the minutes. I don't know that we need a resolution for that necessarily, but...
There actually is a special form that we have to fill out as a resolution.
Okay.
That, when I talked to the league about it today.
All right.
That we do have to do that. We also then have to notice the vacancy.
Yeah, so we will, I think the next thing is to declare vacancy, and there would be a resolution for that as well, so. Um, so, did you want to proceed with declaring the vacancy then?
Sure, so then we, we have to declare vacancy in the council, and then, as I understand it, we can make it, we'll have to have a special election.
So, let's, let's go with the vacancy first.
Okay.
A second then.
So, your, yeah, uh, resolution to declare a vacancy.
Yeah.
And Mary, your resolution, or to, uh, second that resolution to declare vacancy.
Correct.
All right. So, uh, we have a resolution to declare vacancy, councilmember Brian, second by councilmember Rainville. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right. Thirdly...
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding, based on the timing of the resignation, um, the council has the, uh, ability to appoint someone temporarily, but a special election would be necessary, and it's my understanding that there has to be a given time period before that special election would need to take place. Natalie can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, if that's the case, the earliest that, um, the state has specified, like, February, April, May, August for special elections, so the earliest we would be able to have a special election probably would be the second Tuesday in April, which would be April 8th.
Actually, it's April 11th.
That's a Friday, actually.
That was wrong.
That was wrong, yeah.
Yeah, the, the email that Tom sent out that I copied, you guys saw it, was, um, the wrong dates were listed. I had to verify, because I'm like, why would we do this on a Friday?
I was gonna say, they're all Fridays.
I, I looked up the statute today. It was talking, it said the second Tuesday of those months, except November.
It is. It is. So, um, Mr. Mayor.
Natalie.
I just had a lengthy conversation with the league today about that. I wasn't quite prepared, because I thought we were gonna talk about this on Tuesday.
Yep, no, I understand.
Um, first of all, we have to have an ordinance that states that we have a special election and what circumstances we do. I was concerned about it, the cost of it, because of the budget, and the budget's already pretty tight, but how do we pay for it? Um, I could not find an ordinance. Do either of you reckon, or, um, have any recollection of a special ordinance?
No. No, I think we would have to. This is the first time we've had need of a special election.
Okay.
So, we would have to, if it's, if it's the, uh, council's opinion that we would like to have a special election.
Then an ordinance must be passed first.
Yeah.
And we would have to have Cindy probably draft it. But, um, the other option is we notice the vacancy and we hold a special meeting. We can hold it open for four or five weeks. To do the election, we actually have to do the entire process of a regular election. Angie's suggestion was, we do the vacancy, we find out who's interested, have them fill out an application, per se, and hold a special meeting to have them come and address the council, to be able to, um, tell us why they wanna be on it, and the new council to approve and appoint. That person could be appointed until the general election in 2026, therefore saving the city the whole election cost. And then, um, at the general election in 2026, we would hold our special election, which would be to fill it for two months, and a regular election to go on for the next term. So, I was gonna have all of this in writing and stuff for you, um, from Angie, but like I said, I wasn't expecting to talk about it today.
The other, another option would be, since we just had an election, uh, we have candidates who came in third in that election. We could appoint and then determine whether it's a special election or separately, but appoint until that election was held, whether in 2026 or in five months.
I believe we have to have it posted. We have to, the statute is not clear, and what she was quoting was based on a law, um, that we could decide how we wanted to post it, whether it was Facebook, whether it was, um, through the paper or through posting.
Well, the, uh, statute 41202.
Yep, and we went over it word by word for several, and she's like, it just is not clear. So, she actually went back to her, the league's handbook, and then went back to some, a court case, and said that it should be held open. Now, that's not to say that our third-place person couldn't be the only one to apply and then appoint them, but we are supposed to hold it open according to Angie of the city, or at the league.
So, where, where did it say that? Because it says in the statute...
It does not.
It says, "May fill the vacancy at a regular or special council meeting for the remainder of the unexpired term until the person's able to resume their duties."
It did, it does not say it in the statute. It had to do with some court orders of what had happened when some, that somebody fought it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
It, you just, the statute you just read, unless I heard you wrong, said until they are able to resume their duties. So, that's not a resignation vacancy. That is a, let's say, somebody is sick, or somebody is out of town for six months and unable to do it. You would appoint somebody to take that position until that sitting council member could reas, reassume their duties.
Right.
Uh, they, there's, there's a number of contingencies before. They didn't read the whole subdivision, too. Um, a vacancy in the office of mayor or council member may be declared when the council member, when a council in office is unable to serve in the office, or attend council meetings for a 90-day period because of illness, or because of absence from or refusal to attend council meetings for a period of 90 days. If any of these conditions occurs, the council may, after it has a resolution to declare the vacancy to exist, fill the vacancy at a regular or special council meeting for the remainder of the unexpired term. Then it says, if one of those conditions is they're ill, um, until the person is able to resume duties and attend council meetings again, whichever is earlier. This person resigned, so they're not ill, they're not coming back.
Not relevant, so, some...
Can you look at the statute, please? He just turned a bunch of it, but yes, there's a bunch of it.
Yeah, so...
That's, that's subdivision two of statute 41202.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would ask that we ask Natalie to put together her conversation with the league and what they are recommending, because I've got information, too. I didn't print out anything that, for my use, that dealt with a temporary vacancy. This is a true resignation, and from what I'm reading is we, we can appoint somebody. We have to decide what that process is going to be as a council. We may need a res, uh, the resolution declaring the vacancy, um, but then we would have to hold a special election. And then I wanted, the notes I had to my, for myself is, um, what are the early requirement, early voting requirements? Can we move the voting to Town Hall, the historic Town Hall, or to the city office? Um, if, if that's a possibility, to try to just help with the disruption of a, of a special election, and if we can't, we can't. And then how, how soon could Natalie be ready to, to hold a sec, special election of the dates of April, or May, or August, or November?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Natalie.
So, they kinda answered that. Um, I had to put together the packet, like I said, I wasn't bound, but ready to discuss it tonight. Um, if we do wanna go ahead and go for a special election, then we do have to pass the ordinance first.
It's at first, okay.
Um, and have, you have to declare on that when and why you would hold a special election. The other thing I'd like to consider is, if we're gonna hold a special election, is to find out where we're gonna get the money to pay for it out of our next year's budget. And I think the third thing that I would like to kind of address, too, is, my understanding is we have to post it open. I don't know, I mean, Mr. Schmidt came in third place, but he had also withdrawn his candidacy.
He was in fourth.
Or fourth place.
Yeah.
Cheryl was.
Cheryl was in third.
Okay, so she could potentially, because she was still on, I'm sorry, I thought that it was, for some reason, I had it missed, but...
But it also says, and I don't mean this to be disrespectful, but, but it also says the council's not obligated to appoint any candidate previously defeated in an election for the office, so we're not obligated. Not that we wouldn't consider, but we, it is a mandate to us.
Right.
We have to look at who's, who is interested in it, and, and then, as a council, choose from those interested parties.
So, I will, was that a direction, that's what I did say? What I would like to do is confirm it with, um, Mr. Ruby.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, I would move that, um, we direct Ms. Johnson, um, to continue with her research with the league. If you need to contact the Secretary of State's office and Mr. Ruby, and clearly define what it is we have to do, and a timeline associated with it. And at your suggestion, Natalie, is how are we going to pay for this?
So, Mr. Mayor.
A second.
Yep.
So, one, we, we could have an ordinance for a special election, which we need anyway, whether we have that special election in April or May.
All right, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion. All right. And a motion, councilmember Rainville, second, councilmember Brian. So, we would need the ordinance, whether we have the special election in November of '26, or sometime this year.
Correct.
So, that would, would seem to be a no-brainer, that that has to be an ordinance put together for a special election. Whether that's Attorney Ruby doing that, um, or the, I don't know why, that would be a planner, other than she does ordinances, but...
I do have another clarification on that.
Hey.
If we wait till the '26, we don't have to declare a special election. It just goes on the regular ballot in the general election, so then there is no...
She said it was a special election for two months.
Well, there will be two candidacies. It'll be one to finish the November, December, for whoever was appointed, if they wanted to continue it, if they were going for candidacy, or the new person to sit for the next four years.
That wouldn't be confusing at all.
Uh, yes.
For two months.
But that does not cost the city any money. Um, as far as changing the location, rather than having to use a church, we cannot do that, because that would cost another bunch of money, because we have to send out the postcards out, and then we would have to do it a second time to change it back from the 2026.
We, we...
That is right, that's costing the city.
So, 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 we, we could move it, but we'd have to find the money twice for the postcards, and then cause confusion. So, it is, it isn't something that's prohibited.
Right.
We can at any time change our voting location, so, okay.
The, the other part of that is, so the league is, is recommending that it be posted open for a period of time. It doesn't say that in the statute at all, so is that just a best practice that they're coming up with, or?
That was her recommendation. I don't know where she was getting that from exactly, so I will, like I said, have everything more in writing from her tomorrow, which would have, will be in the Tuesday packet.
Is it, okay.
And again, I would like to run that past Ruby as well. She was like, she was also very disappointed with the state statute, but it's not clear.
So, Mr. Mayor, to clarify, what statute, what's the number you're looking at?
41202.
Yeah, I'm looking at 35102, which is completely different. Talking about vacancies in elected, in elected offices, so...
What one was that on?
351 dot O2.
That's the one I got that Tom Hunt sent out.
Yeah, so...
So, how does that read?
Every office shall become vacant on the happening of either of the following events before the expiration of the term of such office. Death of the incumbent, the incumbent's resignation, their removal, leaving, other, other reasons for them leaving. So, then, that says that the office is by default vacant because of the incumbent's resignation.
What statute is that?
351 dot O2. And then, there's all sorts of other things that, which talks about recess, which is, I'm assuming would be a state office, but then an appointment. When a vacancy in an elected office is authorized to be filled by appointment, such appointment shall continue until the next general election occurring after there's sufficient time to give notice and until a successor is elected and has qualified, so. And as I understand it, because the term is longer than two years, there would have to be some sort of election that it can't wait till the next general.
Which is what the league told me it's saying, so...
Okay.
I will also talk to her about that, as far as what, the legal research, and then run it past Bob. I think it's probably the best practice to...
So, the specifics for the appointments is under 351 dot O6.
The six you said?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor. So, Natalie ran down the League of Minnesota's avenue. I ran down the Bob Ruby Avenue today. Bob was not able to get back to me, and I'm fully expecting to hear back from him tomorrow. Um, but we, uh, are trying to track this down. I mean, this is hot off the press, right? So, we're trying to do our best, and, and I know we've not really wanted to come into meetings and, and be blindsided and have group think and all that kind of stuff, but for us to be able to continue this conversation tonight, I don't think is, is fair to, to staff, when we haven't got all the information together, and it wasn't on the agenda to be able to talk about tonight. So, um, if you guys have statutes, or you have stuff that you want us to take a look at, we can, but I think we're gonna need more than an afternoon to be able to try to do our research and come back with what the league and legal advice and all that kind of stuff is. So, I think trying to ram it through tonight probably isn't, uh, the best course of action.
Mr. Mayor.
So, it, on 351 oh five five, point oh five five, preparation for special elections. If a future vacancy becomes certain to occur, and a vacancy must be filled by special election, appropriate authorities may begin procedures leading to special election so the successor may be elected at the earliest possible time. For prospective vacancies that will occur as a result of resignation, preparations for a special election may begin immediately after the written resignation is received, cited in section 351 oh one.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To piggyback on what both Natalie and Scott has said, we don't have the info, information at our fingertips. So, my motion was to ask Natalie to go to the league, Secretary of State, and Ruby, and be able to put together for us a package of what is it we are required to do. We have already made a motion to accept, accept the resignation. We've made a motion to declare a vacancy, which then also includes needing a resolution that I would, guess would come back at Tuesday's meeting. And at Tuesday's meeting, we would have more information about how we are gonna move forward with this, what are, what are our legal requirements. Rather than everybody looking at their phone, different statutes, nothing in front of us. I forgot to put the statute numbers on what I printed, so I can't tell you what statute I'm looking at, but I gotta...
Because here's different things that we had.
There's, there's some different, you know, um, but it depends on where you get it out of the league book. It depends on where you get it from the state. So, I'd rather have us all looking at the same page with the same information. We've never dealt with this before, and we weren't prepared to deal with it tonight. And I'd like to just vote on this motion, and...
It's disappointing that, that your head election official in the county can't give you that information.
Well, take that up with him. I mean, I, that's, it's not on us. We... Natalie, with short notice, has gotten good information. We just need to get it clarified, so that we do it, we do it correctly. Again, we've never had this before, um, and so we need to do it right, and we won't find ourselves in hot water, so...
All right. Any other discussion on that? Mayor, if you can figure out what statute you have, and send that out to us as well.
Yep.
So, I've got statute 41202, we got from Tom Hunt of the county, 351 oh two and oh one, actually. We got from councilman Brian, and another statute, and, and a league who says state statutes aren't very clear, but they have different recommendations, so. So, you'll put that together and get that out to the council at your earliest convenience here?
Yeah, hopefully I can get it out with the packet. I was trying to get as much information today, but when we were notified.
All right. So, that being said, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Brian, uh, joined me in calling for this meeting to talk about the current opening, um, or the upcoming opening in our administrative positions. And I asked that the new council member and mayor be included in the, the email. I'd also like to ask that they be included, and I would move that they would be included in the discussion that we have today. This is going to be, um, I don't know how long this process will take, but it's going to be dealt with in the long term with the new council. And so, I'd like to have their input, um, with the understanding that they're not a voting member, but we do value their input on it. So, I would move that we allow the newly-elected officials to place their concerns, questions, and their suggestions, with the understanding that they will not be voting on, on the motions.
All right, so, um, you all right with that, councilman Brian?
What?
You okay with that, since you helped put this together?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, do I need that to be a motion? I mean, you said moved, so...
Mary moved it.
Seconded.
You seconded, yes. Councilmember Brian seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
One of the first, uh, things that was included in the meeting was to leave the position open in, um, for the time being, but it would be my opinion that we should look to, there still is a need to fill the position, the administrator position, and that we should look for ways to fill it. I would, I think we need to review the, the current job, job description, and then if we are going to, and I would recommend looking at a, a, a temporary administrator, and to, uh, as, as that would be the immediate need, because I believe filling the actual administrator position is going to take longer, and to get a temporary administrator would be to put together some sort of, uh, recommendations, a, a, a job description, even if it is, um, reduced based on, based on current needs or the existing one, and then we look for to, uh, fill a temporary administrator while we look to replace the, the full-time position.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
To councilmember Brian, so is that a motion?
I'm just, before discussing, if, I don't know what everyone else thinks, that's only my opinion.
I, I would agree with that. Um, a couple notes I had for myself is that we would request Attorney Ruby to enter into discussions with Frank Boils, who Mr. Ruby had previously recommended for an interim position, um, and to work on a mutually agreed-upon contract, which would include remote working, um, if is appropriate, um, how long we think it would be, uh, if there's an extension included in that, and that, that there'd be overlap between Frank and whoever the new administrator is. That, as you said, the job description be looked at, and if there's any tweaks that need to be made to it, um, based on, um, the incumbent's experience in it, um, that the city attorney would look at the existing contract that we had with Scott, update that with anything, you know, if there was job duties, salary benefits, um, the timeframe for giving notice, um, uh, if there's a buyout clause, the performance review requirements, any other things that we should add to that. And that would get us started, and I, it's, I think in the conversation I had with Scott that Frank is willing, or is acceptable, is willing to come in if, if, if Scott would respond to that, or speak to it.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to add to that?
Sure.
So, I've had multiple conversations with, um, Frank and also with Mr. Ruby, and Frank, uh, as councilmember Rainville said, is interested in, uh, in trying to help in any way that he can. A lot of the things that councilmember Rainville referenced there are things that would be important to him. Uh, he wants to take, uh, direction from one person, um, when it comes to signing the contract and all that kind of stuff. So, his, his take is taking a look at, or his request would be taken a look at, um, because he is gonna be transitioning, so he isn't gonna be available immediately, so, when him and I were talking, we were talking about, uh, maybe a transition somewhere in January, or some along those lines, uh, at the latest, February 1st. He is looking...
He is looking at his calendar. He would like to be able to have this, you know, to be able to be in this role three or four months to help out. He doesn't want it to go into the summer and into the fall and all that kind of stuff. He does kind of want to have a window of what the request is going to be. Mr. Ruby did supply Frank with a copy of the old contract that he had, just for reference. That just happened today, so there's been some dialogue back and forth. I also know that Mr. Ruby talked to Frank for a couple of minutes late last week, just over the phone, just chatting about it a little bit. When I talked to Frank today, he was very comfortable with me speaking on his behalf and that he does have interest. He does have history with the city. He does cherish the opportunity to work with Natalie again and be able to do some things here as far as helping out. He understands that, what it may take to get another administrator in here. He's got some connections. One of the things that we talked about, if you're going to be going through an agency again, would be, you know, DDA may be on the table as you guys have used in the past, but there's another agency that he's used and he really enjoys that process. And it's a substantial savings to the city to be able to use them. And they do do a little different process, but it is, I would recommend them. I went through their process and they did a really, really nice job of getting input from council members, not just the hiring committee, but council, all council members, players in town, business owners in town, staff, all that kind of stuff. It's a two-day process and they really do a nice job of trying to put together a whole package there. And it is quite a bit less expensive than DDA, but you get to the same end game with it. So Frank would have a couple of recommendations along those lines and what that process would look like. I did reach out to the individual that I know from this company and they would be interested in giving you all a proposal if that's something that you want to do. But I didn't want to get the cart before the horse here, so I just kind of seen what was out there. Had, like I said, multiple conversations with Frank to see if he was up for it and all that type of stuff. And also started having conversations with Mr. Ruby because Mr. Ruby was trying to get a hold of, getting a hold of Frank, so. So I think you would have somebody there if it fits what the need is when it comes to Frank and somebody that's got experience and been here before, right, kind of deal, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And Mr. Boils did serve us well. He really, he came in with good experience. He helped lay the groundwork for different things. And he under, I would assume understands we're in a better place than we were three years ago. So it won't be as cumbersome or as burdensome as it was previously because we have a good background now. As far as a search company, right now I think we've got to worry about what are we going to do for the election? I think the last search company was twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars. If this other one could do it for less, that would be great, but we would still need to find that money.
Sure.
But before we get to that step, I think that we, I would move that we would go forward with asking Ruby to reach out again to Mr. Boils or continue to reach out with Mr. Boils, come up with a mutually agreed-upon contract. And I will send Natalie my notes and what would be in that contract, timeframe, the length, you know, the length of it, extension overlap, including, as Councilmember Brian suggested, the review of the position and then the update to that, the update to the contract for the position based on reviews and such.
I'll second the discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Scott, was there any discussion about, you know, well, I guess the bigger question I have is if we do make an offer to Frank, depending on when Frank comes in, and this question is probably more for Natalie as well, are we going to be okay with where we're at waiting for Frank to come? Or is there going to be anything that, how are we going to address anything that may or may not come up in the meantime, especially if I've heard that Frank might not be available till February? I can probably guess we'd be okay the two months after Scott's gone for the end of December, but if anything comes up in January, you know, is that something that our staff is going to be okay with?
So, Mr. Mayor? Scott?
Yes, we've had lengthy discussions around that. I am doing everything I can before I'm gone to make, to leave. And Natalie's where, leave everything as in tip-top shape as I can. We're going into Natalie going to be gone at the end of December. We're in a slower time of the season. When I talked with Frank, he would be available by phone if there was things that we needed, he needed to do in January. He said the latest would be February. When he's talking about that, he's talking about potentially working three days a week, having the flexibility if he's not needed in the office to be able to work from home, but to have some sort of reduced, he's not going to be here five days a week like he was before and all that type of stuff. So he did make it known to me that he would, you know, if Natalie had a question about anything, that he would be available for that if it's the day-to-day stuff. And you guys may not like to hear this, but that's up to you guys. Natalie knows that I'm only a phone call away and that I will help and I got the background of some of that stuff that's going on. I want to leave the city of now then in as best shape as I can, right? So she has the ability to call myself, she has the ability to call Frank. And I think really we're talking about a thirty-day window at the most and maybe it's quicker, maybe it's middle of January and we're only talking about a couple of weeks because we're going to have year-end stuff and things to clean up here by the end of December that I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of stuff that you're going to need.
But I just want to make sure that's the option, the road that we're going down, that everybody's comfortable with that. And because I don't want it to go, well, just the council decided that we're going to get, I don't want it to come across in any way, shape, or form that, well, the council decided we're going with this guy and he's not going to be available till February. So that, you know, that there's going to be, that there's, we meant that there, we did that on purpose and we don't want any problem, that just if problems come up in January, I know I'm starting to ramble a little bit, but I don't want it to come across that this was done on purpose as far as, you know, we want this, wanted the staff to be shorthanded and that.
You can speak to that probably.
There's a reason, there's a plan in place and everybody's comfortable with it, so we can, we have something that we can use going forward.
I've had multiple conversation, Mr. Mayor, sorry. I've had multiple conversations with Natalie, sitting down with Natalie, looking at things that need to get wrapped up. And if you guys want to let her speak, she can speak into it too. But I think Natalie's comfortable with this plan, knowing that there's help on the way, right? And Frank, that he's a phone call away and that we are kind of going into the slower time of the season and all that kind of stuff then. I'll let you speak for yourself. I hate to speak for you, but I think I'm pretty accurate in what we talked about, so. I don't think anybody's going to say, you did this on purpose or you left us an alert or anything like that.
Right, and I just don't want, I just want to make sure.
If anybody left you an alert, it was me, right?
I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. That this isn't intended to be an alert, leaving anybody an alert. That we've got a plan in place.
Right.
And we can use it going forward. And if there's, anything comes up, we can address it as, when it does.
Yeah, and I think Frank being the person, if that's who you're considering with the background and the history and all that kind of stuff, he'll be able to interject more quickly than somebody that maybe doesn't have the history here.
Oh, yeah. I heard.
I think it's pretty much fine. For the situation where I think it's pretty good planning, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
We also have the ability to reach out to our attorney. If it's a planning issue, Cindy Nash, if it's a building, it's Rum River, if it's engineering, we have our Shane Nelson. So, yeah, I don't see us being shorthanded. And, but I understand your concern because that's what can, what people hear and what people say are two different things at times. And so, yeah, the goal is not to leave them shorthanded. You know, fortunately, we have the two administrative assistants in there. They are really doing well, picking up a lot of what has been kind of sitting there, waiting to get done. So that's helpful. So there's, that burden is off of Natalie's plate, which is good.
Mr. Mayor, could I add to what Councilmember Rainville was talking about there?
Are you done, Mary?
Yep.
So I'm glad she said what she said there because I just want to reiterate a little bit more. So last week Natalie and I sat down with Mr. Ruby and Cindy Nash and we went through things for the next sixty to ninety days, things that may be popping up on the radar, things that we need to be aware of. So Councilmember Rainville's completely right on mark as usual, talking about things that can be addressed and dealt with through that avenue. We also have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning with Rum River Consultants, talking about them. Natalie and I sat down and taken a look at some of the hot things that are code compliance, let's just say, and those kind of deals that may be popping up in the next, again, sixty days or something along those lines. So we're meeting with them. So while I'm still here, I'm meeting with all these contractors, right, and involving Natalie in the conversation, so she understands where we're going and we're prioritizing things for the next sixty days to kind of, to bridge what we're talking about here, right? The short-term deal. And Bob and Cindy and as of tomorrow, Rum River Consulting, they'll all be, they'll all be on board on what we're doing and where we're going. So I think Natalie will have a good feel for it and she'll have the resources to lean on if she needs to, so.
Hi, Mr. Mayor? I don't know if I can put my two cents in. First of all, I love Frank. He and I have continued to be friends. I have no problem, I have still already called him for other things. So I would have absolutely no problem working with him again. I actually felt nicely, I felt great because he said he would come back to work with me. So I really enjoyed him. I do think that we're going to be, that the holidays will be here, so I don't think December's going to be any kind of an issue. January is going to be very busy with the swearing-in and the first meetings and the, you know, the stuff that's going to come up there with the year-end, all that stuff that we have to do. I think that the biggest issue that we're going to have is any code compliance and hopefully because we have snow and stuff, we won't have that many complaints that need to be done. And we are going to touch base a little bit on that tomorrow. The girls are doing awesome. I'm really pleased with them and how they're picking up so quickly and able to get some things done, so. I don't believe it would be a problem. And I do know that Frank would be a phone call away if I did run into something. And he would be probably a little bit cheaper than using Mr. Ruby.
Yeah, I didn't hear the part about that Frank would be available via phone call, which if we can take advantage of that resource, definitely that's, I'm much more comfortable if something happens that he can't actually be here until February, that at least he's available to address things as needed, so.
Yeah, if he wasn't going to be available, I don't know. I mean, I still don't think it's going to be that busy. I don't think it's going to be too bad, but if something does come up, you know, then at least I would have someone to back up.
Yeah.
All right, so where do you want to go from here, Mary?
I'm sorry, what?
Where do you want to go from here?
I'd like to move.
We already did.
We already did, okay, so just vote on it.
All right, repeat the motion.
That we would request City Attorney Ruby to enter into discussions with Frank Boils. Before I go any farther, Natalie, I'll email this to you so we have to write it all out.
Perfect, thank you.
Enter into discussion with Frank Boils for an interim position, which would include working remotely as appropriate and being, and bringing in mutually agreed-upon contract back to council for review. The things that be included in that is the length of the term, extension options, overlap between interim and permanent. Request that the incumbent review the existing city administrator job description and make recommendations based upon their experience in the position and update as appropriate. Third would be to request City Attorney Ruby to revise the city, the current city administrator contract to reflect any changes in the job description duties and/or salary benefits, the termination, number of day, business days required to work after giving notice in order to be in good standing, any buyout clause that we would add and performance review requirements. And anything in the meantime if the council has other questions on it or additions.
All right, and Dan, you had seconded that?
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
For Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just want to give notice, I'm going to submit an RCN resolution at the, for the December meeting, appointing Natalie as the acting city administrator and provide an increase in salary based on the additional responsibilities she'll be taking on and stipulating that any other terms, Ms. Johnson's employment would stay the same, specific that she would not go to a salaried position. She would still say hourly because it's just an acting position. So that's just a FYI coming forward. If there's nothing else, I would move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, I just wanted to clarify that I think it is in our business. So once we have an interim administrator in place and Frank is on board and in place, then we can post for the, continue the process of posting and interviewing for, and determining how to fill the full-time position. That I don't think, I think if Frank is on board and working with us, that it's not an immediate priority to get it posted because it would be, I think it would be very valuable to have Frank review the job description and then we can get it posted and proceed with hiring. Just because I don't think we have to do that tonight because, one, we don't have that information in front of us. But if we can, once we have a job description, we can review it and get it posted and continue on with the process, so. At least that's my opinion, that we don't need to necessarily address that specific issue tonight. And then with that said, Mary?
I would just ask if we could ask the newly electeds if they have any of what, even though we already had the conversation, forgot to ask, but Chad didn't raise your hand, so. I know, but do you have any? Okay.
In my view, you're covered all.
All right, thank you. Ken?
My thing is I'd like to have an opportunity to look at the job, her job description and all that information. So that, you know, we are able to operate with.
Yeah, totally. That's kind of, yeah. I would expect that to be for everybody.
And then I move to adjourn.
I adjourned.
Matt, do you have my number? Do you have my number?